Press, the coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to proclamations. We have a proclamation recognizing the 150th birthday of Stephen Crane.
Should we get him to?
I'm here, Mr. Crane, here.
Susan, Susan. Oh.
No. You want to hold it up? So what do you say this thing? How can we be late?
He's not good for the picture.
I'm going to do the.
No, I'm.
Yes, Howard, if it's terrible, we'll do it. But I'm too uncomfortable in the public.
Whereas Stephen Crane, a New Jersey native and Asbury Park resident, was born on November 1, 1871, in Newark, New Jersey, and was the fourteenth and last child of Reuters, suffragist, very helpful Ted Crane, and Reverend Jonathan Chalmers Crane, a Methodist Christian minister. And whereas Crane is a world-renowned author and poet, who is touted as a short story virtuoso, began his career as a journalist at a news bureau in Asbury Park, the town where he grew up and became renowned as a teen. And whereas his masterful imagery added to the angel's allure of his news and literary works, and caught him to be noted as a Jersey man and the only one of the stellar few of all famous New Jersey writers, was continuously flourished and reached the peak of literary renown. And whereas one of his latter and most famous works, Red Bank of Cards, is required reading for many students in middle schools through college. And whereas Mr. Crane's childhood home in Asbury Park is a state and national historic site that serves as home to the Asbury Park Historic Sites and serves as a local museum and cultural center. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council acknowledge the talented literary contributions of Stephen Crane. Be it furthermore resolved that in celebration of Mr. Crane's 150th birthday and in honor of his life and legacy, the mayor council hereby proclaim November 1, 2021, to be Stephen Crane Day in the city of Asbury Park. And even though he's not here, I want to acknowledge Tom and Richard Hayes. They saved this house from demolition in 1995. And afterward, Frank DeLacandro bought the house from the Hayes family. And Frank gave that house to Asbury Park Historic Society. So there's been a lot of people involved with keeping up and maintaining this house and making it available to the public. And this is Susan Rosenberg from the Asbury Park Historical Society.
This is a wonderful moment and occasion for the Historical Society for Stephen Crane, which is worldwide. Germany still celebrates Stephen Crane where he actually died. But come to the house. It's on 508 Fourth Avenue for a tour. And we continue to celebrate his legacy. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity and honor.
Special events and then items to be presented.
We can.
You want to switch up the order? Go ahead.
Okay, I think you're right on here. And just for ladies in the Stephen Crane House, AP TV meets there. So I want to just thank Tom Chesnick, who's not here tonight, but runs the show over at the day-to-day, at least over at the Stephen Crane House.
Yes, he's a curator.
Yeah, he's a great guy as well. So I'd be remiss if I didn't bring him up. So can we bring up any member of the Asbury Park AP TV? If you were here, and I know if you were in the bathroom. Jenny, who is our chair. And then can we bring up Bruce and Mike, who will be presented with an award? For doing an amazing job on your projects. And I'm going to like, we both talk about your project for a minute or two as well. And Jenny's going to present the award. Nate, do you want to come out here now?
Oh, you guys are going to need to get a little bit tighter.
All right, like, how about we let them do their thing and then we'll get together and type our names. So Jenny, you want that? Will that make it beautiful?
Good evening. On June 9th of this year, the Jersey Access Group, which is a new organization of about 60 New Jersey communities that went past on local television stations, presented 45 awards in 15 categories for noteworthy community productions. For the first time since its inception, AP TV submitted two films for consideration. They both won. First place in the documentary category went to Bruce Booker. Bruce is an AP TV-based filmmaker who has been showcasing the city's artists and musicians for over 20 years. His winning film, Asbury Park: Two Days of Protest, is a multi-generational production featuring music from Bruce's son and photographs from his grandson. Third place in the documentary category was presented for the film The Guardians of Asbury Park, which was created by Nancy Savino and Mike Sedano. Mike and Nancy came to Asbury Park in June past in Ohio from a corporate event production field and after settling in, sold the unit for an art house cinema. The vision that that vision became the Sherwood Cinema, which provided not only the Asbury Park community with the new filming experience, but also drew in audience for New York City and Philadelphia. If you want to know more about what this great help was doing, now visit artschool.com. Thank you, Bruce, Nancy, and Mike, for being a part of the AP TV AP House.
I'm going to let Bruce and Mike say a word. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the reason the AP TV committee exists is because of John Kaplow, who's in our audience, who started. Hello, ladies, John, so everyone sees you. So we should absolutely acknowledge that. And Mike would completely take the awards.
Thank you very much. When we came into town, we tried to do things for Asbury Park as well as for the showroom. And this was a natural outgrowth of our ability in video production and the wonderful work of the Environmental Safety Commission, which currently has and maintains 23 gardens in Asbury Park. And I thought before they go anywhere fast, we should get pictures of them. And we came into a video, which of course Mike was able to edit down for our awards. So thank you very much. And it's a pleasure, it still is.
One thing was supposed to be made. My son had released a song. And he asked me to go down there. Everything kind of happened at the same time. He asked me to come down here and film what was going on. And I was up there doing it. And he called me again when he was down in DC. Other than that, he was in Hawaii. And then my grandson came by. He said, "Gramps, come on." So I went down there and I just started shooting everything as I went. And it was just a spur of the moment thing. I didn't expect, I'm surprised. The answer to the problem is, I just put it together. Scotty Goose was actually a pro right now. I forget what TV he's playing on. He organized the Second Protest. And it just all just came together. It was just one of those lucky things. So I appreciate you. I didn't expect it. I appreciate you.
I have two flags for you guys.
Yes.
And then maybe we could get a poster together of her picture. And then can you send her a picture?
Sure.
Or something.
I don't know.
All right, can we get a little closer together with the flag? With the awards? So maybe Bruce, Nancy, and Michael, you know, so we're here. You, you here, yeah. And then the rest of us, AP TV, in the back.
Although there's someone's face I can't see. If you guys can't see us, we can't see you.
There's smiling. You can't see.
All right, do you mind if I just jump in real quick?
Yes.
Michelle is also part of the AP TV family.
Do we want to continue with the presentations and do the Boys and Girls Club?
Or? Yeah. So where is it? Where's the, where's the text?
It's not a problem. It's a presentation.
A presentation? Yeah, right.
Yes, yes, yes.
Want to sit?
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Doug Eagles. I'm the executive director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Monmouth County. Mayor, deputy mayor, city council. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to come before you and share a program that is near and dear to my heart and something that I think is a great asset to the community here in Asbury Park. And as you can look up on the screen, the project that I want to talk about is called Project LEAD. Project LEAD is an acronym for Learning, Earning, and Advancing Dreams. And it's a youth workforce development program. However, before I get into the details of the program itself, I want to talk a little bit about the broader need for why I think a program like Project LEAD is important for this community now. You know, the number one, I guess I should advance. Yep, I got it, I got it. You know, the number one thing that we hear from the teens throughout this community and more specifically in our club is that they want a job. You know, the sense of self-worth and self-dignity that one gets from, you know, receiving an honest day's work is something that we all can appreciate. And our teens are no different. This is something that they also would like for themselves. In addition, you know, a lot of the teens from our own community are oftentimes unprepared to succeed in a work environment. That's why our project is something that really goes a long way to help prepare our young people to thrive in a professional environment. You know, there's also a noted gap between, you know, the revitalized East Side and what's happening on the West Side. And we think that we can help create a pipeline whereby our youth are able to participate in a lot of the economic revitalization that's occurring on the, on the East Side. And there's also a need to develop a long-term workforce to support economic revitalization for this community as a whole. We think a program like Project LEAD can help in that process. In addition to those kind of anecdotal statements, there are statistics, I think, that also help buttress the case for a program like Project LEAD. For example, over 85% of students in the district are considered coming from under-resourced communities. Unemployment rates for teens ages 16 to 24 are higher than any other age group, sorry, higher than any other age category. And then in New Jersey more broadly, youth unemployment rates are five percentage points higher than pre-pandemic levels. All of these variables together, we believe, oh. Sorry. Technical malfunction. All of these variables together, we believe, provide a powerful case for investing in youth workforce development programs like Project LEAD. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about Project LEAD specifically, how that program came about and where it's at today and then where we want to go moving forward. So we started a pilot program based on a model of a program that was run up in Jersey City for a number of years. I had been going up there and meeting with the executive director of this program to observe this, this, this youth workforce development program and the success that it had attained and realized that I wanted something like that here in Asbury Park for our youth. And so we worked with that group to create this Project LEAD. And we piloted it in the summer of 2018. We hired 10 participants, six of which were, six of the youth were from Asbury Park. The other four were from Neptune. And the elements of that program were basically three parts. The participants received paid work experience, life coaching, and professional development workshops. At the end of that program, we surveyed our youth to find out, you know, what was the impact. And some of what we learned was that 100% of our participants had a better understanding of steps that were required to succeed in enrolling in college. 83% of our participants gained a new perspective for handling work, work conflict, how to resolve that in a way that was satisfactory to their coworkers and to employers. 100% of the participants in that program felt more confident about how to act appropriately in the workplace, things that are kind of soft skills related. So based on that, the data we got from that survey and the feedback we got anecdotally from the participants in that program, we went out and sought funding to expand that program to a year-round program. We wanted to employ these, these kids throughout the year and keep them plugged into what we thought was a really good experience. And so, starting in January of 2019, we hired 15 participants, seven of which were Asbury Park residents. And we expanded the professional development activities that were offered and included partnerships with outside groups that were able to provide a broad range of program experiences for these people or for the lead participants. We also developed grade-specific focus areas that, you know, that were divided up into freshman, sophomore, junior, senior years that were age-appropriate to the participants in the program. And then finally, this past summer, we partnered with the Food for Thought by the Sea, which is a nonprofit run by Marilyn Schlossbach, whereby our Project LEAD participants were able to gain culinary experience on her food truck. I did it again, Mike. So the basic program design for Project LEAD is built on really three core pieces. The first is life coaching. Basically, life coaching is a mentor that our participants are given access to on a regular basis that they're able to meet with and discuss, not just the challenges they have working at the club, but just any sort of challenges they have in life. And those life coaches can help them navigate those different challenges. The second piece or second component is our professional development workshops. We really want to provide engaging programs and experiential learning opportunities for these young people so that they can understand all the different skill sets required to successfully navigate a professional work experience or work environment. Key to that was, is mainlining or streamlining those, those Project LEAD staff with our already existing staff. So all of the training that our already existing staff get on a regular basis, our Project LEAD staff got as well. So they felt like they were really part of the team. They were co-equal with the rest of our adult staff. And then, of course, the linchpin that held it all together was the paycheck, having a paid internship. We provide 12 to 15 hours of work a week whereby the youth are able to get a weekly paycheck. And those three pieces really were kind of the element that this program rests on. Oh, man. Mike, I'm killing it. So I mentioned before the kind of the age-specific breakdown. And I know I don't, I don't have a lot of time, but I want to just speak briefly to how we source this out. And so the freshman participants, the focus of that first year is really orientation into the club. What does it mean to be a youth development professional? What are the skill sets that are, you're going to need to succeed in the environment at the club? We really go a long way to helping them understand what those things are. We also provide them with a financial literacy course, Money Matters, so that, you know, as they're starting to get their paychecks, they can understand how to manage that money and set financial goals for themselves. The sophomore year, we shift in the focus to community engagement. We want the kids focused on doing activities outside of the four walls of the club. In addition to the work that they're doing, they're involved in different community activities. We participated in the Ciclovia a few years back. We participated in a Planned Parenthood Health Conference that our kids hosted. We worked with Congressman Pallone on a youth council that he did. Anything that we could do to get our kids out into the community and allow them to feel a sense of empowerment by giving back to anyone, you know, throughout the broader community. We worked with Habitat for Humanity, just a bunch of different opportunities that helped them develop a sense of camaraderie and a sense of belonging that is critical to their feelings of success as they move forward. Junior year, we shift that focus to career and college readiness. We enroll them in our College Bound program, which helps them understand what their interests are and how to align their interests with different colleges and what does it take to apply and get into college. We partner with Columbia University and their business school in an entrepreneurial training program that's hosted at Rannie, the Rannie School just up the road. We also recently partnered with the Rutgers University Business for Youth Program, or the Ruby Program, where our kids are learning how to develop business plans and presenting those business plans before a panel of judges. And then finally, their senior year, the whole goal is really character and leadership development. We want our youth counselors to counsel the younger lead participants. We want them to, you know, understand how to run and implement their own programs as opposed to just being an assistant to some of our, our adult staff. So this whole four-year period is really geared up towards building them up and setting them up for a path for success later on in life. Thought I could do it. I know, I got it, I got it. I covered some of this stuff already. So we're here today really to speak about how we can expand this LEAD program. Right now, we serve 15. We want to expand it by adding an additional 10 Asbury Park teens to this program. We want to expand the career and internship opportunities in a, in a way that I think we missed the first time around when we were running this program. We found that while we were running the LEAD program and they were working inside the club, there was a lot of great opportunities for them to learn through making mistakes. And that's important. We wanted them to be able to feel free to make mistakes, have our staff come alongside them, have their life coach come alongside them and help them understand how to recover from those mistakes and get back up and get back to work. The problem with that is that's not what really happens in the real world. So what, as we expand this program, what we're hoping to do is focus for two years of having the young people work as youth development professionals in the club. But then the next two years, partner with outside businesses and place those young people in those businesses. We would subsidize their pay as they work in those businesses. They would still have all the benefits of the LEAD program. They'd have a life coach and they would have access to all of our professional development experiences and community service projects. And we've talked with some businesses like Marilyn already. And we've talked with the Chamber of Counsel, I'm sorry, the Chamber of Commerce. And they're excited about partnering with us on this program to place our lead participants in some of these businesses. Look at that. This is just a couple, you know, anecdotes from some of our participants. Tyleek, who's pictured on the right there. He says, you know, he learned to not let anything get in his way, that you have dreams to accomplish. You go chase your dreams. And today, anybody can be anything. You just have to put your mind to it. Do the work and you will get there. These are the types of mindsets that we're trying to build and engender in these young people. And we want them to not just have that mindset, but have the wherewithal on how to really live out that mindset in the real world. And the LEAD program helps provide them the vehicle or the pathway through which they can actualize, actualize themselves. So we're here today to formally secure or at least request funding support from, from the city of Asbury Park. Again, not to fund the entire program, but to fund the expansion of this program. We would like to see the city of Asbury Park invest $50,000 a year for two years in allowing us to expand this program to reach more kids. And so with that, I would like to just introduce Danny and Destiny, who are here from the club. Danny is our area director here in Asbury Park. And Destiny runs the Asbury Park unit. And both of them oversee and run and implement the LEAD program. So that, any questions? I don't know if that's appropriate, but.
No, let me just say, it was back in June when you, Dan, city manager and myself met. And we thought it was a perfect relationship just because, number one, of all the good you do at the Boys Club. But number two, this year, we were trying to do a lot with workforce development at maybe an elderly age. So this would fit right in with Mr. Goodman now and everything. And then this is a joint project between Asbury, Long Branch, Red Bank, and the county, where everybody's ponying up money for this great program. And the money we give would be for Asbury Park students, for Asbury Park residents. So I mean, it was just like perfect timing for us. And like, it was a no-brainer. There was no hesitation on the city manager's part or my part as far as like, could we fund this? It was like, yes. And again, I didn't know if you were going to introduce your staff. Glad you did because they do such a great job in the presentation. And everybody knows, like, John Moore doesn't leave Asbury. Doug, you even got me to go to a meeting at Long Branch to talk to Mayor Pallone about this. So then we finally got Mayor Meadow on board. So and then Commissioner, Director, are known. So it's for three towns and the county contributing to this great program. I think you do an excellent job in all your programs. But this one's just really like, you know, great timing, couldn't have been better timing. And all I can say is thank you. And Donna, please.
Yeah, everything you said there, Doug. Thank you for your presentation and for your staff back there. It's good to see you guys again. And the purpose of this tonight was to advise the rest of the council of this initiative. And if the council is so inclined, we can move forward with funding this program. And we don't have to make a decision tonight. But Doug is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Everybody knows as cheap as Moore is, Moore says, "I'll get the votes to pay for the money." Just because this is a great program and you do such great work at the Boys and Girls Club. And we all have to work together as one team. And I see this as a tremendous opportunity. And knowing that the council people, knowing them very well, I knew they would all be for it.
Great, thank you.
Truthfully, I thought we had told them already.
Thanks, Doug. This is really awesome. You know, we have some other committees and commissions. I know you've got, and in with the mayor's wellness. But, you know, there's also some environmental committees and commissions that might be an option for your youth as well.
Yeah.
Is this a year-round program?
It is a year-round program.
Okay, well, that's great to know.
We would also like to see, again, there's no obligation, but we would love to see people within city government step forward as life coaches in the program to, you know, meet with the, the lead staff, you know, on a semi-periodic basis to just share their experiences with them.
Would love that.
Yeah, great.
Doug also is on the advisory committee for recreation. And he always has advice. He always tries to help out as much as he can.
Thank you.
And this is ours. Mike, can you send me the PowerPoint that we looked at? It's hard, it's hard for me to like think what.
Yeah, he has it. Yeah. Thank you.
We always support the Boys and Girls Club in the city. And we think that this is a, you know, a great contribution. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
So I think that's a yes.
We'll talk and get that worked out, Doug.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming.
We will now move on to the special event application.
The only application before you is from the Jersey Shore Rescue Mission. They're requesting to close a portion of Sewell Avenue for the annual coat giveaway on November 20th. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I'm going to ask, we take a two-minute break from the agenda. And Tom Hayes got here late, so he's here. Everybody knows Tom Hayes knows it. For him to get here at all is amazing. So if you could come back over, we'll get Susan and we'll take a picture, get a picture of you with everybody.
Smile.
Well, I love to say back to those days, I had three little kids, who are now bigger. My daughter, I think, was like one and a half. My son, my next son was about three and a half. My older son was like seven. And we were just, you know, just barely getting by on our own in Asbury Park. And the Stephen Crane House was there, it was abandoned. And it was going to be bought up by somebody in deal to knock down and make probably a four-family house or something, whatever crazy stuff they would have squeezed in there. So when we found out about it, I did some research. I went to the town historical society and asked if they would consider purchasing it. And I couldn't get them to do it. And I went to some people I knew up in like the Rumsen area thinking maybe, you know, they'd get some stuff up there. But they weren't interested. Back then, it was, you know, the early 90s. People didn't really care much about Asbury Park, except those of us that had lived here and loved Asbury Park forever. So my wife and I made the kind of crazy decision to try to purchase it ourselves, which we were able to do, and that's where it started. So with a couple of nickels that we had together, we were able to save the house. And many years of going on the third-story roof and trying to patch the roof because it leaked right through and all that kind of stuff, like what should be, that was before cell phones. If you're there like 2:00 in the morning, you know, working on the house, you'd be like at the home with the three kids wondering what the hell was going on. Anyway, it was labor law. Certainly Frank Delisandro gets a lot of credit because, you know, we saved it and that's great. And we made, we did get a 501(c)(3) in a nonprofited place, which was a lot of work. And I had folks from the town help me out with that. But when I sold it to Frank, who was my next-door neighbor on Sixth Avenue, you know, he did what he needed to do, but he gave it to the historical society. So today, I would say that house might be probably worth five, eight hundred thousand, whatever. You know, I mean, it's a big house. And, you know, he just donated it to the historical society. So Frank Delisandro, who isn't here, would never hear when we're doing pictures and stuff because he's in the lineup, gets a lot of credit. That's extremely generous. I don't know if any of us could afford to do it. It's not like he's a wealthy guy, but he just loved the house, loved the program, loved the historical study and loved Asbury Park so much. Thank you for the time. Thank you, really appreciate that. Sorry to take up everybody's time. Yes, we'll do.
Thank you.
Matters from City Council? Councilmember Chad?
I have nothing at this time.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
As we all know, that this coming Sunday is Trigertree Holiday. So Asbury Park along Recreation, along with the Fire Department is having a trunk or treat in front of the municipal building. You're all welcome. Make sure you tell the kids about it and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Trunk or treat, 1 o'clock on Sunday. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Nothing.
Mayor Moore?
I have nothing, but I just want to let everybody know, if you got a presentation, you don't feel, if you don't want, want to go home, go home. You're not just sitting for this meeting. So you're free to go if you want to. Thank you. I think it was directed by North Carolina, I'm not sure.
Matters from the city managers?
Thank you, Melody. I have a couple of items on the agenda tonight I just wanted to briefly touch upon. There's a resolution on the agenda tonight that creates a participatory budget committee. And it's kind of a mouthful, so I'm going to say PB from now on. And what this is, this is an initiative that is practiced in about 3,000 cities throughout the world, about 1,500 in America. And the purpose of this is to involve community members in the budgetary process of the city. And how this is going to work is we're going to create a committee for residents of the city ages 14 years through adult, anyone can join. And what's going to happen is we're going to ask the community to submit to the council on this committee ideas that they want to see done in our community, whether it be a bandshell, a dog park, an art installation, anything you want. So these ideas will come through this committee. The committee will work with city staff to make sure that there are something that we can do and are able to do. And then we're all going to vote on this. The entire community will be able to vote on these projects. The city council will allocate a certain amount of money for these projects. And then we will have these projects fulfilled in our next capital budget program. This is exciting because this touches a lot of things. Our 14-year-olds obviously can't vote in city government. This introduces them to city government and allows them to participate. So we're going to encourage participation from the middle school and high school students to come up with ideas of what they want in their community and then be able to vote on it and see this project through the end. It also encourages other residents, many of you that, you know, are here tonight are involved in our community. There's other residents that don't care about agendas and they don't come to our meetings. But they might care about putting an art installation in a park or putting in a dog park. So these residents now can become part of our democratic process. So the council saw that this was an important item they wanted. They wanted to do this last year, but during the pandemic, we couldn't quite get it off the ground. So tonight's our first step. So you'll see tomorrow on our website a link if you want to be on this committee. Please sign up for it. You don't have to have any experience other than being a resident of our community and wanting to see some change. So that's number one, the participatory budget. Something a little less exciting, but it's a requirement. Under the Christie administration in 2010, there was something initiated called best practices. And what this is, it's a checklist that the state hands out to all the municipalities each year with certain requirements that the city must meet to maintain their best practices, to do government the best way, and also to have some transparency. So each year, each municipality has to fill out this form that asks several questions. And each question is scored. And you have to maintain a score of 15 or higher to maintain the funding that the state gives us each year. So I'm very pleased to say that we exceeded 15 by, I think we're at 19 points. And we're getting our full state aid. But part of the process is we have to talk about the best practices during a meeting. So that's why I'm here. So while we did very well, there are some items that we can improve upon. One thing is the city needs to have a disaster recovery plan, cybersecurity. So that's something that we'll budget for next year and we'll put that in our budget and we'll also move forward with that. The other thing that they ask us to do is update our personnel manual every couple of years. We'll do that again this year. Another best practice that we weren't able to say yes on was an investment strategy. So we're going to work on that with our financial advisor and our CFO. So that is my report on the best practices. Now, if there's any questions from council, I'll be happy to answer them.
You have any questions?
Okay. Seeing none? That ends my report, Melanie.
Thank you. Matters from City Attorney?
I have nothing at this time.
We are now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
All in favor? The meeting is now open to the public. Please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Louise Murray, Rand Avenue, Asbury. I would like to take my three minutes, give it to either any of you up there. Please read me the Resolution 2021 450, wait a minute, 454. I didn't pull it up. My computer is down. I couldn't, I wouldn't do it anyway, to be perfectly honest. And I don't know, I can't go by these titles. I want to know the meat of it. I want you to read it to me and explain to me what you're doing with fossil fuel. Please, somebody can explain it to me.
Do you have any other questions?
That's it. It's just, it's just a request.
So if you want to do it.
I can do the par phrase. I'd have to dig it up if I'm reading the entire thing. But what it basically says.
It takes three minutes. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, no, what it basically says is there's three companies that put the biggest amount of pollutants in the United States. This is, New Jersey is not a state that is involved in litigation to hold those three companies accountable. This is a resolution requesting that Governor Murphy look at that and consider joining the national litigation to hold these companies accountable for the overwhelming amount of pollution they do. So this was from the Environment and Shade Tree Commission and two or three other state environmental groups at their request.
And I can give you a copy if you'd like.
Thank you, sir. So you're going to vote on this? I mean, I just think that maybe.
Did I say ordinance?
All right, let me just digest this because I just didn't like the whole concept of you guys voting on this, where I think it should involve more of the community's input.
Well, just so you know, the entire Shade Tree Environmental Commission is the one who brought this to the table.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get that. You know, between the masks.
Well, I'm with you. I would love to talk to you without a mask too, Louise. So the Asbury Park Environment and Shade Tree Commission met with the organization that made this request. The Environment and Shade Tree Commission passed it on to the city council. The city council put the resolution on. It's, to be quite frank with you, ceremonial more than anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a fair statement. Donna, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. Very good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Hi, Rita Moreno. I didn't get that whole answer, but I'm not too happy with that resolution. It's under the consent resolution besides. What is a consent resolution? I read it on the phone and it says that you have to get the shareholders to approve. Who are the shareholders? Is that us, the taxpayer? How did we start out with these consent resolutions? When you just pass them and we don't know what they're about. And I don't think you're a scientist or anybody else is a scientist that's giving you information about the environment and the climate. I think you ought to lead that up to the real professionals. You're passing a resolution. You want to stop us having gas? Is that what you want to do? Electric? What do you think electric runs on? It runs on oil, in case you don't know it. I mean, like, you're just overstepping your boundaries with these resolutions that you're doing. It's not fair. And you should have a town meeting and discuss that whole thing. Not everybody agrees with you about climate change. I'm one of them. And I think there's a lot of people that think that way. So if you want to do climate change or you want to have a resolution, go up to the state, have a meeting of the town and let's see what everybody says. Most everybody, if they say it's okay, all right. But you don't just come up out of the blue with one of these things. It's not fair. And the other thing about eminent domain, I was in that, right? How come certain people could stay in their property till today? And me, I had to get out by 2007. Now, my property is worth a lot of money today, but I had an order to leave my property in 2007 and give it to a stranger. That's what I call it, because I owned it for 22 years. Now, the motel on Kingsley, he just sold it for six-point-something million. How come he wasn't asked to leave? How come they didn't knock down that building like they knocked everything else down? I mean, there's something wrong here. And we have to get to the bottom of it because I'm not too happy. I left in 2007. 14 years later, there's nothing on my property. And at that time, I was paying over $10,000 in taxes. So you already lost $100,000 on my property and more. Why did I have to get out and other people stay is what I really want to know. So I don't know if you have an answer tonight, but you better not do this resolution tonight because not everybody thinks the way you do.
Thank you, Rita. And as far as 2007, I mean, you're asking me at 10 to 7 to answer something that happened 14 years ago. And as far as your property, you're right until the past couple of weeks, there's been nothing going on on that property. Right now, they broke ground to build a 210 apartment. So they are done, they're working on that piece of property. And why in 2007 somewhere?
I know you missed it. I'm not blaming you.
No, I know, but I mean, I can't give you an answer from something from 14 years ago. And again, shoot me an email, call me and say, John, I'm going to ask this question. We'll have the answers for you.
I called you, but I didn't get you.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, if you called today, you're right. I was in a stupid, long meeting while it was there.
No, but I just found out about the mode town.
Okay, well, I didn't know Rocky sold it myself, so. And why he was left out, I don't know. How do you know Fred knows off the top of his head? I know when they went to arbitration, part of the arbitration settlement was, after that, I-STAR indicated which ones were going to be eminent domain and which ones were going to be set free. How it was decided was well before all of us. So I mean, we can do some research and give you that information down the road.
Well, I mean, something, it's not fair. And I don't know if I have any legal, I know Fred would have to answer that question.
I don't think he's going to give you free legal right about suing the city. Thank you, Rita.
This is nice. I like this low like this. Hi, everybody. Sylvia, Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. I actually just came to invite everybody to the menorah lighting. We just got a time for it officially from Rabbi Greenberg from Shabbat of the Shore over in Long Branch. He performs that lighting for us every year. It's going to be on December 1st at 6:00 p.m., which is a Wednesday over in Kennedy Park, which is where we've been holding it now for the last five years. It's magnificent and Rabbi Greenberg brings toys for the kids and donuts and everything. It's really a lot of fun. I know most of you have been there, but hopefully maybe the rest of the room would like to come. But this meeting is really exciting and wonderful. I didn't see the agenda beforehand. The presentation that Doug made about Project LEAD, he had spoken to me about it a couple of weeks ago. And the research and the plan he's done for this, it's really exciting. And the chamber is just wholeheartedly behind supporting that. We will give him whatever resources we have. And if I can scrape anything out of our budget, I would be happy to give it to him. You know what our budgets are like. I also was very excited to see Nancy and Mike here. And I had just gotten off the phone with the press today when I found out that the showroom, which was brought here by Nancy and Mike and through their magnificent collaboration, will be reopening on Friday. I'm very excited about that. You guys, you brought Invisibees to Cookman Avenue and just can't thank you enough for that. And lastly, I'm really happy to be able to talk about Tom Hayes in front of Tom Hayes because I typically come here and thank him and the New Jersey Natural Gas, New Jersey Natural Resources for all that they do for the community behind his back because he doesn't like to be in the spotlight. And the story he told about the Stephen Crane House is one of my favorites. And I talked to his wife about that. And there's a little bit more to it. And it's just, it shows what a perfect match Mr. and Mrs. Tom Hayes are. They didn't just buy that house with what they had. They used their credit cards. They did everything they could to keep that from the wrecking ball. And I have to say, I had three little kids all at once. And if my husband ever came to me and said, we're not really established, but I want to go into a super lot of debt to buy a house that nobody else will buy because it's important, I would be like, that's great, but we're not. And so Jean is every bit as wonderful as her awesome husband. So thank you for everything you do, Tom Hayes and the Gas Company. you do, Tom Hayes and the Gas Company.
And I'll pay you 20 bucks later. Thank you, Sylvia.
Bruce Booker in Dunlue Street. Business has been in the city for about 30 years now. They're getting limited access because of what has been done on the roadway, and that's Meats &amp; More on Tinkett Avenue. And it used to be where you could just park in front of the place and walk in. Nobody took a long time. And now you have to park over in the railroad parking lot. It makes it hard for seniors, which I'm one, but I'm not that senior. But it makes it hard for some of the elders to cross the street and get across and get the meat safe. I know a lot of people have moved into town, the vegetarians and everything else. That's all one of the good. But this business has been here for 30 years and serving the community. Whether you eat meat or not, it's still a viable business that has been here for 30 years. So they need help with access to their business. And that would be appreciated. Second part is, a lot of people have moved into town and they're trying to deal the town and alley owners of the town. So you see a lot of lawn services around. They're putting chemicals on all of these lawns. And we have water table where they deal lake that's already suffered enough, in my opinion. And so we need to stop these people that are coming in and putting chemicals all over the place. Every lawn here I'll let you pass by now being treated on their lawn with some type of chemical. And there's ways that you can do this because you have community guard, the Shade Tree Commission is aware, that you don't have to do these things in order to get rid of bugs and all that. There's balance to nature. So there's other ways to address this other than these chemical companies constantly coming in with their lawn care, the chemicals. So that's about it. And that can be addressed at all.
Okay, Michael, do you want to respond about Meats &amp; More? I think that was affected by the state regulation, correct, where we lost-
Yeah, that's correct. So unfortunately with NGDOT, with their upgrade of the Route 71, the Main Street project, whenever they do a project, they bring it to the latest standards. And by doing that, they created left turn lanes, which eliminated the parking on Springwood Avenue. But we can look at maybe some other ways to improve the safety in that area for folks crossing to get to Meats &amp; More from that railroad parking lot, for sure.
Even younger people, I see them having a rush because you have people coming off of Main Street, left and right, then the light changes. And so it's hazardous for the elders to cross that street.
Yeah. It's something we could look at and evaluate whether we could put a mid-block crosswalk, but there's a lot of caveats that come with that. So we'll have to take a look at it.
Lawn care you can't do anything about because that's a business, true.
I can certainly take it-
City ordinance that they've been coming with natural products. Like, I don't use chemicals on weeds around my house. I use the 30% vinegar that you can buy.
I'm happy, Bruce, to take that back to the Environment and Shade Tree Commission, put that on their radar, see if we can do some outreach. Even if we can't require it, we can certainly probably do some outreach.
Yeah, it's also something that we've been looking at as a city for what we use on our green spaces as well. So that's something that the city has also looked into moving forward as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
And just one more thing. Remember that Deal Lake borders on seven municipalities?
Sure, sure.
So there's seven-
We have to do our part.
Exactly. Seven communities that need to buy into this with us.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Peyton. I just had a question in regards to Resolution 2021-455, the Bulletproof Vest Grant.
Peyton, can you state your address for the record?
Yeah.
Name and address?
307 Fourth Ave, Apartment 301.
Could you just say that ordinance again? I'm sorry.
It was 2021-455, the Bulletproof Vest Grant. My question was, it was just a simple two-parter. First is how many bulletproof vests will be purchased and will police officers be required to wear them while they are on duty?
All police officers for at least the past year, about longer, including street crimes, have worn body worn cameras. So the answer to that part is yes, all police officers, including street crimes units, wear body worn cameras. This is just a grant from JAG that we're accepting to put towards-
Yeah, the purchase of bulletproof vests, yeah.
Right.
I believe, I don't know, I don't want to quote the price off the top of my head, but this is, let's probably buy two and a half vests.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there, I'm Michelle Gladden, 210 Second Avenue. First of all, I wanted to thank the council. I sit on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, so thank you so much for supporting the lead program. I've had the opportunity to watch that program grow over the past two or three years. And the effect that it has on our young people, it's just life-changing, but you already know that. A second reason I came up to the mic is because we are working, I sit on the board of the Asbury Park Museum, and we're working on a multimedia presentation. It's called The Segregated South. And it's going to be held from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, November 14th, at the Johnny and June Room. And so I just wanted to throw that out there to the community because it's such a tight timeframe. I just wanted to throw that out to the community. We also, at the AP Museum, we have, Susan, you want to pass me the card? Susan is also on board. We apparently have a pop-up exhibit at the Berkeley. It's Asbury Park 150 years. That exhibit is going to run through the end of the month. And then we're switching over to a new installation. This exhibit will be moving to Monmouth County. But I just really wanted to let the community know about this new event on the 14th. I think it's a great opportunity for us to come together as a community. Thank you.
Well, wait a second. You've got a minute and a half to go.
I didn't want to take too much time.
Give people on TV land, since it's not to November, more information. If you've got a website where they can go. You said the Johnny and June Room, but you finally said that's at the Berkeley Carteret. So give more directions.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor Moore. So again, it'll be from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at what's called the Johnny and June Room in the Berkeley Hotel. It's right across from their restaurant. Bang, bang. And it will be, again, a multimedia presentation. We're hoping to kind of just unearth some of the great spotlights of the history of Asbury Park, beginning in its founding 150 years ago. We are working in support with Celia and the team for the 150th celebration. So this all complements one another.
And the date?
It's, I'm sorry, 2:00 to 4:00 PM, November 14th.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your help with that.
You have 39 more seconds if you want to-
I'm done, but thank you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alex Prasatsky, 610 Sewell Ave. I'm going to pretend like I read the agenda, but I didn't, I did not know participatory budgeting was going to be on today. So I just wanted to commend the council and thank you guys for taking that up. I think it is an incredible initiative. I've read about it in the past. And honestly, one of the few places I've always been like, it would be great if we tried that, was right here in Asbury Park. Donna, I think you did an incredible job explaining exactly what it is, exactly how the community can get involved, exactly what the real effect it's going to have is. But yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys for taking it up. I think it's going to change the face of this community for good. And I think most of the members that grew up here will be able to come back, see their projects come to fruition that they worked on with their neighbors and fellow community members. And yeah, great work.
Thank you. See nobody else? Motion to close?
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now closed to the public. We are on two minutes. I have the minutes of the municipal council executive meeting of October 13th, 4:00 PM. Municipal council regular meeting, October 13th, 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on two consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are to be considered routine in nature. There will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On our consent agenda, we have Resolution 2021-453 through Resolution 2021-456. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on two individual resolutions. The first individual resolution we have is a resolution approving the payment of bills, Resolution 2021-457.
Move it.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-458, a resolution awarding a contract to T and M Associates for specification updates, project bidding, and construction administration services for the carbon media replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. Move it. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-459, a resolution amending a contract with T and M for engineering services. Move it. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-460, a resolution amending a contract with D. Simone for assistance and guidance of structural evaluations. Move it. Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-461, a resolution approving change order number two of, or the RBC West Channel improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-462, a resolution entering into an agreement with the Community Affairs Resource Center to administer the Department of Community Development Block Grant Program, Homelessness Prevention Program, and for the authorization of payment for services. Move it. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-463, a resolution entering into an agreement with Coastal Habitat for Humanity to administer the Department of Community Development Block Grant Programs Home Repair Program and for the authorization of payment for services.
Move it.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-464, a resolution authorizing payment to Asbury Park small businesses through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, CV Cares Act Fund. Move it. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, and just a short summary. This was something that the city put out in June. It was open to any business in Asbury Park that had 10 or fewer employees. And now we've given out 23 grants to businesses for $2,500 each. And now the funds are gone. So people have plenty of time to get them in. But if we plot it where they were given out to the city, it's not all Cookman Avenue, which were in the southwest, northeast, everything. It's all throughout the city. So again, I think CDBG, Amy was only committee, I was only committee, and we were finally successful in getting 23 people to apply. Thank you.
We're on to Resolution 2021-465, a resolution authorizing the purchase of storage containers for the Beach Department. Move it. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-466, a resolution to backfill sewer charges on various accounts. Move it.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-467, a resolution to credit sewer account with erroneous reading by New Jersey American Water for a property located at 813 Dunlue Street, Block 1905, Lot 10. Move it. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-468, a resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property.
Move it.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-469, a resolution establishing a particip-, I knew this word was going to get me.
I tell you.
A participory, I forget.
We get it.
Yep. Budget Committee to facilitate the participory budgeting process in the city of Asbury Park. I knew that was getting me. Move it. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to second readings, public hearings. Our first ordinance up for a public hearing is Ordinance 2021-36. And the title is a Bond Ordinance, Amending Bond Ordinance 2016-16 and Bond Ordinance 2018-4, each here to four, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Asbury Park in the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, on April 27th, 2016, and February 28th, 2018, respectively, to reappropriate the aggregate amount of 447,220 and reauthorize bonds and notes in the aggregate amount of 425,923, and providing for various 2021 capital improvements in the city appropriating 2,489,850. Therefore, including a grant from the state of New Jersey in the amount of 175,000, and the reappropriation of 447,220, and authorizing the issuance of 1,996,523 bonds or notes, including the reauthorization of the bonds and notes in the aggregate amount of 425,923 of the city to finance the part of the cost thereof. We will have a brief overview, a brief overview before we open the public hearing on Ordinance 2021-36.
So to summarize what Melody just said was, this is the capital ordinance for 2021, which includes the allocation of funding should the council decide to purchase items for our IT department, or police department, or fire department, public works, et cetera. When these items come before the council to purchase, there will also be a resolution attached to them. So all this is doing is merely authorizing the bonding of this money to move forward with our capital purchases for 2021.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on Ordinance 2021-36? Move to open. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now open on Ordinance 2021-36. Any members of the public who would like to be heard, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record. And all comments must be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
I wouldn't be right if I didn't stand up with all my money, Pete, yes. I really don't understand all of it. But I guess you're condensing certain bonds, is that what it is? To one? Or you're borrowing more money? Because you said a lot of numbers, I didn't get a lot.
So what we've done, Rita, is there were a lot of bonds that had been passed in previous years that had never been spent. So we're kind of cleaning them up. So for example, for the IT department this year, we need about $400,000 in funding to replace computers and servers and things like that. However, we're only bonding $210,000 in this ordinance because there was another ordinance that was already passed in previous years for $200,000 that we're going to combine those two ordinances. So that's why it's a little confusing this year. Normally, we would just do one ordinance that has just one bond attached to it. But Joanne sat down, we went through all the outstanding bonds, we're using a lot of these bonds that had been previously funded but never used. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Well, how about telling us what our bonded indebtedness is?
That's why Joanne's here. That's why Joanne's here. I knew you would ask that question. So there you go. Joanne, please tell her our.
I knew that was coming.
I knew it was coming.
Yes, as of today, our total outstanding debt is $60 million, 149,152, which is down $19 million from August due to the fact that we've done cancellations of old ordinances and monies we weren't going to fund anymore. Our percentage of debt at the end of '20 was 1.52, it's now down to 1.21 with a maximum of 3.5 allowed by the state.
So we're less than half is what's allowed by the state, so we're well within our rights.
So that was $60 million?
Yes.
That's a lot, isn't it?
No, it's not. Joanne just said it's only 1.2%. We're allowed 3.5%. So we could raise that if we wanted to to over $100 million, but we're not.
I know, but $60 million is a lot.
In the grand scheme of things, it's really not.
Because we keep borrowing. I mean, like, I don't know if the law would be free of that, but I know Neptune City has zero debt, so I don't know how they do it, but evidently, I think you should get in touch with them and find out. Because they have zero. I mean, if you have 10 or 20.
Okay, you're stringing from the ordinance.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Does that include this ordinance?
Yes.
The $60 million?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else like the earth? See nobody motion to close?
Second. All in favor? The public hearing is now closed on Ordinance 2021-36. Do I have a motion to?
Stay there.
Do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 2021-36? Move it. Second. Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.